Vice Chair, Mr. Cavazos, Board Member, Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Frankel, Mr. Chin, Mr. Duca, Mr. Radell, our Secretary, Ms. Murphy. If you have a cellphone or a case, could you please put it on silent or vibrate? If anyone's gonna testify tonight, could you please stand up and raise your right hand? Take an oath.
Anybody who's gonna vote here tonight has a vote.
If anyone's gonna testify.
So we have to tell the truth, the whole truth, not the public truth, so help we God.
I do, I do.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to waive the reading in the minutes?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Make a motion to waive the reading of the minutes from May 26.
Second. My motion, seeing none or in favor?
Aye.
Post, so move. Under all business, case number 16031, Peter Moran, 92 Grove Street. We took a look at the property two times. I hope everyone down there looked at the neighborhood. In the meantime, in the mail, an email, I did get a petition with roughly 150 to 200 signatures. Did you count these, Madam General?
Yeah, it's roughly 200.
Roughly 200. In opposition to the project, that just changed. But looking at the property and looking at the way it's set up, do you have anything you want to say before we?
Yes, on behalf of my client, Peter Moran, he has asked me to ask the board if he could withdraw our purchase.
Okay. Cover motion, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. And number 16 dash 031, Peter Moran, for a variance to subdivide the existing parcel into three separate house lots on the premises number 92 Grove Street Quincy, I make a motion to grant the variance.
Seconded.
Seconded.
My motion, seeing none or in favor?
Aye.
Post, so move. Thank you.
Thank you.
Under new business, case number 16032, Patricia Long, for variance finding to construct a new deck on 139 Bayside. The African there representative here. Thanks. Sure you're right? Yeah. Mr. Frankel is off, Mr. Radell sitting in. The African there representative here. 139 Bayside. That'll be put on for last. Second call. Case number 16033. Check Sang for a variance to modify the existing ZVA case 0625 to finish the basement on the premises number 22 Spence Street. The African here. We got a problem. Someone here?
Yeah.
Please step forward. I know I got a problem getting in this building. People are outside trying to get in. Name and address for the boardroom?
22 Spence Avenue, Unit 3.
Is that where you live, Unit 3?
Yes.
Okay. Can you tell them what you'd like to do?
I just want to finish my basement, just not enough cost, that's all.
So you're keeping, you're not putting out a bedroom or anything, you're just making a playroom down there and some closets?
Yeah, that's all.
Do you have a contractor look at that yet? So it's not gonna be a bedroom?
No.
We'll pick that in a minute because it's not gonna be made, a bedroom in the basement. Living space down there. Any questions, Mr. Wolf? This is one that went back there. They have four feet, open space, you know. Eventually they cut up that lots and they cut them all up and they made that two point unit buildings in the back.
But I guess I'm confused, Mr. Duca, why is this in front of us? Because they can take the living space?
It was a case that this board granted me for, for the past and you based that on certain amount of rooms and area.
Okay, I see. All right, thank you. I have, I'd like to, any egress out of there? I didn't, I didn't see anything in the front, right?
There's no egress out of that.
You can't get out. You can't get out.
No exit. There are no exits.
Yes, exit, yeah. Because this is in a basement, so we have the exit.
Is it that, is it that door or something?
Is it back door in there?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Yeah, could you tell us where the door is? Is it like under the stairs here or?
Under the stairs coming down, right?
Yeah, and another side. Yeah, yeah. This is the stair, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that the exit, the back door is like in the back.
Okay.
Yeah, just go up.
So there's a door that leads to the outside?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, by that, yeah.
How many people live in your apartment right now?
Three.
Three?
Yeah. And my, yeah.
Oh, yeah, there is.
So I have two bedrooms, so I just want with some cost, you know, cost, yeah.
Any other questions, Mr. Radell?
I have none.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there are anyone here that would like to speak in favor? Speak in favor first of all, second call. Third call, all the party here in close, if you can't respond. Whether it be DPW or the, you give the above reference project and have no comments. If there's anyone opposed on the side? First of all, second call. Last call closed.
I'd be voting in favor.
And that is, that'll be a restriction or there probably can't be any bedrooms in it?
No living space, yeah.
Okay. I'll be voting in favor.
I'll be in favor.
Motion, please.
And matter number 16 dash 033, check Sang for a variance to modify the existing ZVA case number 06 dash 025 to finish the basement on the premises number 22 Spence Avenue, Unit 3 Quincy, I make a motion to grant the variance on the stipulation of the new bedrooms.
Seconded.
Seconded.
On the motion, seeing none or in favor?
Aye.
Post, so move. Thank you.
All set.
Further, under new business, case number 16034, Juan Ho, I apologize for the name, I just, Mr. Chin, help me out again.
Chow.
Chow. For variance finding to enclose the existing front porch premises on 10 Hill Street. The African here.
Yes.
Name and address for the record, please?
Name and address. Juan Ho Chow, 13th Street Quincy, my English is limited.
That's fine.
I'm trying to use.
Okay, then what are you here for?
I would like to enclose my porch and in this enclosed porch, there will be three windows and a wall.
Is that gonna be any heat out there or is it just enclosed for a pre-season porch?
No heating, only as opposed.
Just gonna enclose it so he can take his winter gear and keep it dry?
Yes, I would only put my shoes and maybe a few coats.
Thank you. Any question, the board members?
No, no questions.
Radell, Mr. Chin?
None.
Thank you, you can have a seat. If there are anyone that would like to speak in favor? First call or second call? Third call closed. In case number 06034, we are moving above reference project and have no comments. Is there anyone who's opposed or undecided?
I will be undecided.
Opposed, name and address for the record?
Mr. Chow.
Name and address for the record?
It's Phil Cox, COX, and I live at Five Phillips, which is right across the street.
Okay.
Now, they've been working there for about five weeks with no issues. They're very quiet, there's no debris, et cetera. My only question, I've been in my house for 40 years. This is the first time this has happened, so I'm a little confused about, not why I'm here, but can I ask questions?
Sure.
Is this gonna be owner occupied? You're gonna live there?
Yeah.
Okay, with, this is not gonna be a bedroom?
No.
No, there's no heat there, there's not gonna be no heat up there.
There's no foundation on there?
Just gonna close, is there anyone with windows so we can go in there and put his?
They've been going at it for five weeks, they've done a ton of work on the house with no issues. So I'm not against it.
No, no, I get it.
I'm undecided, just out of, one of the limitations, in other words, I got this in the mail that said they were out of, I don't know how my glasses.
You can't just go closing your front porch without coming?
Well, I mean, we all have closed in front porches, the whole street except maybe one or two houses.
If they weren't, they want to make sure they're not expanding the house.
This is something that's come out of what's been happening in Quincy for 30 years.
Well, yeah.
Okay, well, let's say it for what it is. But I'm not against it. I just wanted to make sure that he's gonna live there, that this is not gonna be a rental. And if he says, yes, I believe him. He's on the oath. Okay, so I appreciate you all listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else opposed or undecided? Second call?
Yes, Joe. I'll see you tomorrow.
Third call. All the party here in close. You know, it's not gonna put heat in there and expand the living space, I'll be voting in favor.
I'll be closed. If you want to buy a house that has an enclosed porch, get the house in Quincy off. I'm not gonna continue that.
I'm gonna vote in favor because the, all the boards of neighborhood has it that way. I don't, it's not, that's the right.
Yeah, it's within the context of the neighborhood, I believe. I'll be voting in favor.
Yeah, it's not even, so I'm in favor as well.
Mr. Chairman. In case number eight, sorry, 16, I'm getting it wrong myself. Dash 34, Kampong Cho, for variance finding to enclose the existing front porch on the premises numbers 10, Phil Street Quincy, make a motion to grant the variance.
Seconded.
Seconded.
On the motion, seeing none or in favor?
Aye.
Post, so move. Thank you, everybody. All set, thank you. Mr. Cavazos, I get what you're saying. It's a different homes and I think they have some beautiful, beautiful porches and really they're destroying the structure of the house. Some of them are different, I think.
They're good.
Who's this? Further, under new business, case number 16035, Quincy Housing Authority for variance to add additional square footage to the second floor existing building facilitating accessible units to maintain current unit count on the premises number 11 Sullivan Road, the African representative here.
Yes, yes, I'm Steve Mosses of the project management for Quincy Housing.
And once you've told the plan, what do you want to do?
Sure. So if you have a set of plans with friends now, we have two different pitches on how we go it up on the second story on the two ends, so similar to, in German time, we had four style buildings. You see some with the platforms, some straight off, they have a big bed. Basically, we're going to two end units to make living space for PCA's and stuff like that for the people. Everything on the first floor will be but a handicap and second floor will be more of a living space for other family.
Yeah, that needs to build, she's not going outside the limits of the building already. He didn't afford time to do that.
Correct, and I think the reason why we had to come is it's an odd situation where all the properties up there is under one, the nine buildings are under one lot. It's not broken or subbed up, so had to come up.
Any questions of the African?
I have none.
No, no questions of this side.
Thank you for that. If there are anyone that would like to speak in favor? Speak in favor, first of all, second call. Third call closed. I'm letting it to DPW, we give above reference project and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided? First of all, second call. Third call closed. Do you have a motion?
Matter number 16 dash 035, Quincy Housing Authority for a variance to add additional square footage to the second floor of the existing building to facilitate the new accessible units to maintain the current unit count on the premises number 11 Sullivan Road. Quincy, I make a motion to grant the variance.
Seconded. On the motion, seeing none or in favor?
Aye.
Post, so move. Thank you, Mr. Mosses.
Thank you very much.
Further, under tonight's event, case number 16036, James Ryan, for special firm of appointment, such a 16 by 26 edition conference number 17, cross, the African representative here.
Good evening, board members, for the record, Steve DeRosa, for Panza Valley Survey, and our offices are in 95 West City, New York City. And here's a statement by client, which has given the name of the owner of the property at 170 and Cross Street. And Mr. DeRosa, the name would simply like to put an addition onto the back of the house. He wants to remain in the city of Quincy and he needs the additional space for his family. One other thing I gotta tell you is this property is totally in a flood zone. The flood elevation is elevation 49. The saving grace is the building finished was 51 and change, okay? I do think that in the future, something's gonna happen because this house is directly behind the parcel that the city just bought for the pump station down there on Furnace Avenue. So that, I think will help the situation in the future. And Mr. DeRosa is here, you know, he probably want to tell you is why he wants to do this addition.
Every great, Mr. DeRosa, you want to say something?
Sure. Tell me if I'm taking too much of your time. But about 11 years ago, we, my wife and I bought the house. My mother lived down the street, so my wife works in Brighton, was right in the middle of between where she lived. It looked like it was gonna be a nice piece of investment property, it's two family, we lived in it for a little while and moved out. In the meantime, I found new roots, I have no intention of leaving. So with that being said, the city owns property behind me, it's still somewhat green space. Even with the pump station going in, it's going to stay somewhat green. The state is on the left side, which is always going to be green. So I feel like I'm in Marshfield when I go out my back door, I look out the front, I'm in Quincy, I go out the back, I'm in Marshfield. With that being said, I don't want to lose the tenants upstairs, I could obviously just go upstairs and occupy the space. But then it would become a financial burden to me in that sense to own the whole house that way. So my goal is to, by adding the space in the back, I'm gonna add two bedrooms and a bathroom. Below it, I'll have a master bedroom. There's a beautiful finished, in 1940s, they did a formal dining room that's beautifully done, which is now a bedroom, when I bought the house, it was considered a bedroom. That's not gonna be a bedroom anymore, that's not gonna be part of our kitchen. And then the other bedroom that's being used by my two children, the 13 and 11, I have their own bedrooms upstairs now. That bedroom, that room is small, it will become a study. My intentions are to live there for a long time, so the reason that I'm going through this is that financially, I can afford to live there this way, the way I'm living now. I don't, I think it's gonna be in addition to the neighborhood, none of my neighbors oppose it.
What, the unit above you, what do you have upstairs now?
It's four bedrooms.
How many?
Four.
They have four bedrooms?
Yeah.
And you have how many?
Two.
So you want to have four downstairs?
I want to have three. Because the two rooms that I'm using now as bedrooms, one is actually a formal dining room.
Okay.
That I want to be reopened as to a formal dining room. It's beautiful, has both windows and everything. And then the other room is so small that it's, I'm gonna use it as a study. There's all myself, I have my wife and myself and then two children, boy and girl.
So you have two bedrooms left?
Yeah.
Do you want to get four bedrooms?
I want to get three.
Three bedrooms?
I want to have three.
Three bedrooms, okay.
And the two bedrooms that are there will not be bedrooms. If you saw the space, you know what I'm saying. It's, when I walked in, this is the reason we bought that. It's gorgeous. We have a four car garage also, which has ample parking. And on the street, we have more parking on our property than anybody else in the whole street.
Mr. Duca?
I'd just like to add that this is a private workhouse, we're all incoming. And I have no recuff, this will be a first class program.
Great, thank you. Any other questions?
I have none.
Thank you. Thank you. If there are anyone that would like to speak in favor? Speak in favor? First of all?
Someone delivered a letter to my house, you know?
They did it today.
Mine is?
Huh?
Your mine is?
Yeah. It's not mine, so I can't be driving either. I didn't ask any of my neighbors for letters, I didn't really think much about it. We really have no opposition. But that's my word. Huh?
Just want to put this on the record. Home Dumpy, dumping in 284 Holton Street, you know, he wrote a nice letter, he's in favor. And I like, he missed the bank, but. If there are anyone else that want to speak in favor? Second call, third call? All the party here in close, I have a correspondent response, DPW, they're ready to give up reference project and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided? First call, second call? Third call closed. Do you have a motion, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. And matter number 16 dash 036, James Dubon, for a special permit, fourth point, constructing 16 by 26 foot addition to the premises number 117, Cross Street Quincy, I make a motion to grant the special permit.
Seconded. On the motion, seeing none or in favor?
Aye.
Post, so move. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Case number 16037, made from front porch, old architect, for variance to demolish the existing single family home garage and construct a two family dwelling, two single family dwellings on the premises number 45 Shen Street. Is the African there representative here?
I'm lawyer.
Which one wants to speak?
I'm lawyer. All right, let's hold that, Mr. Duca, for a minute. Go back. People won't show up. Bad plan. Case number 16032, Patricia Long, for variance finding to construct a deck on the premises number 139 Bayside. Is the African there representative here?
Yes.
Please step forward, name and address for the record?
Papas Varis, I'm a friend, he's out of town, I'm towards the local.
Where is she, California?
Yeah, she has gone to California for graduation.
She told me she thought she would be back, I was gonna put it on last.
She's flying in tonight.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, she's not late, very.
I try.
Yeah, thank you.
You have an address?
I live at 14 Dickens Street, Wallaston Mast.
Okay. And why don't you tell us what you want to do for the African?
She is proposing to put on a 24 by 12 foot addition on the front of her, I mean, deck on the front of her house. Open deck, preferably with a roof cover on it, if not to be enclosed.
Okay.
Made out of trex and pressure treated lumber. She has an existing deck in the front of the building right now that's very, a little small. Just wants to go across the whole front of the house. She's been a resident, going to the area for over 40 years. She's been on that street with her, either her uncle or living on the street down there. And she loves the bay view, so she just run up. In her new house she bought down there, had the same view looking out onto the bay. Not to enclose, it's gonna be an open porch for just sitting out on.
And she just wants a roof over?
She has an existing smaller deck, she wants to increase the size, the whole width of the house.
No, I know, she wants the big deck.
She would prefer a roof over, yes, just for sun and rain.
Oh, and rain.
Well, I mean, they sit out there a lot of times.
I read, I read the letter, about the stones and.
Yeah.
And breaking the deck, potty.
Well, I think a couple of those, I quote.
Potty and stones?
Yeah.
That's pretty good. You read the 20 year. Questions?
I believe she did send you copies of signatures from the neighbors.
I did not, I did not see those.
She petitioned the neighbors and didn't get seven, I believe, or eight signatures from the neighbors.
No, I did not get it.
No, I got it.
You have.
All known. Those are, including the butters on both sides too.
Any questions, the African? Ryan?
Where, what I'm missing here is where's the parking?
She, she still has parking, she's not gonna encroach at all on the parking. She has a paved area in front of her house already in the existing deck. Is about two or three feet short of that area, she's not changing any parking, she's still gonna have two, two vehicle parkings plus a grass spot on the right hand side in front of her house. So she's not losing any parking at all.
I was down there the other day and it was loaded, I was confused.
It's just, wasn't a weekend?
She has an existing. Yeah, she has an existing driveway right now with two vehicles in it. The existing deck is gonna come out and is not gonna encroach, not take any asphalt away or any of the driveway away.
Okay, thank you.
That's all her party in front of.
Bring Washington to the ocean, there will be songs.
Mr. Chin?
One question regarding the size of the existing deck?
The size of the existing deck is, I believe it's 10 or 11 foot wide by almost eight and a half, nine feet. So she's gonna come out a couple more feet and then just go the whole width of her house.
Yeah.
So even though she comes out closer to the ocean side, she's not moving.
She has not approached on her driveway at all, there's still a green space between the existing deck and the driveway and she's not going any farther, the asphalt's still gonna be the same, she's not coming anymore, the driveway's not changing at all.
Thank you.
That takes like magnitude.
Is it magnitude, just on magnitude?
Yeah. If more people grinding up, I'm driving by.
Thank you, any, any questions? No, thank you, you can have a seat, thank you. If there are anyone that would like to speak in favor? I have a letter here from the neighbors, it's dated June 7th, and is on board appeal, public hearing on 39 Bayside. Case number 16032. Proposed modification of the deck, 139 bay view, will be included in current appearance of the deck. Proposed project not only add to the neighborhood, increase the property value of the neighborhood. We are in favor of the proposed deck, 24.4 by 12. 145 Bayside, 155 Bayside, 155 Bayside, 127 Bayside, 127 Bayside, 163 Bayside, 143 Bayside. Have we put it on the record? I'm sorry, there was another page, there was a name on another page, I just got it on the, your call over here.
No, I want to have everyone on the record, that's all.
Another paper here, 133 Bayside. Anyone else? Speak in favor, second call, third call? All the party here in close, I have a letter here from the DPW, case number 16032. Review you, do your above reference project and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided? First of all, second call in this situation. Third call closed. Got a nice piece of property down there, it'd be nice with a nice big deck and things. I'll be voting in favor.
I'd be voting in favor, Mr. Chairman.
Likewise.
I'm in favor, but Russell has a question.
Sorry for the, the way in the question, but the drawing here says 14 feet wide and then on the, on the application, it says 12.
She made a mistake on the drawing, it is 12.
12, okay, okay.
12 by 24.4, I believe it's a correct width, but it's 12 foot.
12 foot wide?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
No, that's fine.
Mr. Chairman, matter number 16 dash 032, Patricia Long, for variance finding to construct a new deck on the premises number 139 Bayside, we're a Quincy, I make a motion to grant the variance. Second.
On the motion, seeing none or in favor?
Aye.
Post, so move.
The issue on Shannon Street.
That's all.
So she wants to continue?
Yeah.
Oh, good, you can do that, yeah.
We can totally do that.
Yeah.
July 12, right, July 26. Oh, okay. All right, could I call the next case, 25 Shannon Street? Case number 16037, Mr. Duca?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor Margaret LaForest asked me to speak on her behalf tonight. She's apologizing she couldn't be here, she had a.
Uh, Councilor Margaret LaForest asked me to speak on her behalf tonight, she's apologizing she couldn't be here, she had a car flight. Uh, she has the applicant, uh, she met with the applicant over the last two weeks. Um, she's been very frustrated over this project, as you know, the board granted a subdivision a couple of years ago. Uh, due to personal, felt the applicant was unable to build, let the lot go to heck, and, uh... Caused a lot of problems in the neighborhood, a lot of complaints, uh, Margaret has been on my case, I can tell you firsthand, um, about that. So the attorney general was involved, letters were sent, so finally, the, uh, whatever the issues that the owner had, um... They met with Margaret a few times last week, and the agreement was that Margaret will not consider, uh, supporting this until they raise the building, clear the lot... And do all of those things at their own risk, and continue the case for the second week in July, uh, in the hopes that they will be successful, they come to this board, uh, to just re, revive the project. So, um, the people have apologized to the neighborhood, they will be back here, uh, if the board grants a continuance. Um, and Margaret does apologize for not being able to attend. Uh, and I'm, she has been informing the neighbors by email, and I think...
Yes.
Some of the neighbors are going through by email.
Okay, she's been, she's been...
It's clear to see some of the...
In this letter, but she will, she will be doing that, uh, in the next, uh, four weeks when this case begins.
I think most of the people in this board, thank you, Mr. Duka, I think most of the people in this board, uh, we know that, that's part of the city that I live in, I drive past that piece of crap every day, and, uh...
I love two houses, and I have rats.
Yeah, and couldn't wait for it to get done, and I keep calling Margaret.
The grass is my waist.
What's the matter with these people, why can't we get this done, why can't we get it at least raised, and it's just...
I was expecting, one time just we created this.
Right, and I lived there.
It's not here, these people don't show up yet, we took time, we're asking for them.
Exactly. And here's, uh, here's the thing, uh, the neighborhood's got to get fixed, we got, we got to fix that. Uh, I, I want to hear the explanations of why, at the next meeting, why this wasn't done, at least raised or cleaned, or someone taking care of our property, thought...
There hasn't even been someone with a law.
Because it's disgusting what happened there, it shouldn't have happened. It shouldn't have happened. And we went back and forth in this project a lot, to help them out, to make sure we get a, the neighborhood cleaned up, and we let them put two homes in there, and that happened, so I'm really personally not happy at all. Uh, but I'll grant the continuance myself, uh, I'll be voting in favor of continuance, I want to clean this place up. Just want to, want to name and address for the record and let you speak, but we're not going to... We'll take your testimony if you'd like to speak, so you don't have to come back.
Yeah, I just want to state, uh, my name is George Vazanty, I live at fifty-two Shannon Street, which is diagonally across Island Property. And I, everybody here is aware of this, this has been an ongoing scenario.
Yep.
And nothing's been done.
Correct.
I took some pictures, which I don't know if you want to look at.
Sure.
But my camera actually made it look better than the actual.
Get another camera.
I live down the mess, I, I know where it's at. But it'd be nice, these people get to see this stuff. You want to leave them for the record, if you want?
Sure.
Yeah, open window really made me wonder.
Yeah.
That, up in the attic, a raccoon has raised a family upon it.
It's a family during the day.
Yeah.
What number Shannon Street are you using?
Twenty.
Fifty-two.
Thank you very much.
Oh, look at that.
Yeah, it's a...
To see a grace.
Sure. Is the intention they have it to abolish before they come back to the house?
Yes. I, I just wanted to add, they already have started the process, they got the Cut and Cap Pyramid National Grid. So they're, they're halfway there with all their sign-offs. The other thing they've agreed to, there's sixteen hundred dollars in outstanding fines, uh, that they're, uh, need to pay, uh, before they even come back, right?
And Mr. Duka has been down, looked at the property, I appreciate it.
They have engaged a real estate agent from Milton, uh, and they intend on building two high-class buildings, so...
My men addressed the situation. Get them to what's there now.
Yeah.
Clean that up, and then we'll, we'll have that meeting July twenty-sixth. Anyone else want to put anything on the record tonight? We're going to open it back up to twenty-sixth. You waited, right?
We waited all this time. Try to look at the justice jury. Hi, I'm Sheena Williams, I own fifty-five Shannon Street, which is, there's one house between me and forty-five dash forty-nine Shannon Street. I have rats. I, I don't think there's any easy way to say that, my neighbor has rats. We think it is in direct correlation to the house at forty-five Shannon Street. I paid two hundred and seventy-five dollars for an exterminator to handle the problem. I'm going to have to keep paying them. I have a picture where I've taken, just today, about fifteen minutes before I came, fifteen, twenty minutes, of... The grass that is about here, almost waist-high at the property. I mean, they did have asbestos and bacon there a few weeks ago, so I understand there's a process starting, but the process has taken how long to start? Meanwhile, the people who own the house, who are committed, I am fourth generation on both sides of my family in Quincy. And, I mean, I don't know what else to say, it's... Quincy is my home, it's my family's home, it's me in my home.
Did you call the city when, when you get the rats?
My neighbor called the city, and I overheard them talking, and I heard scratching in my wall, and literally, two days later, because I work full-time... He said, "You have rats," and I have rat traps out, he caught five rats. I'm sure he's catching more, my dog got skunked because it was all manure, of just animals going in and out of that property. If you look at the back of the house, the doors are just open, like the back, I don't know if there was like an audition?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, it, it just has like this smell, there's a boat back there, I'm sure people used to put their trash back there, like, it's just like a free-for-all. I'm afraid, and I'm always afraid, which is why I stay home third of July, that someone's going to light the house on fire. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you should have called the health department.
Because we're so close.
Did you call the health department?
The health department was there when, I don't know if George called, like, they were all in the bay.
They bait those places, too.
But I have a, I have a dog. So they need to do a special baiting for me, which is why I didn't go for the city, which again, I keep my house clean, my house, my grass is cut, like, I don't know what else to say about this, and then...
Let's hope we can get them ripped down in the next couple of weeks, cleaned up, and get those rats back to the ocean, wherever they belong.
Yeah, it's just...
The dyke, yeah.
It's disheartening, it's truly disheartening.
It is.
But thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, you'd like to speak?
I just wanted to find out, when you do give permission to another builder's house, where are they going to park? There's no parking on this street.
No, no, they, they have off-street parking, the way they design their homes.
They design...
They have separate driveways for off-street parking.
Okay. Yes. And are they going to park on the... Because people that have their parking, parking driveways don't park in it, we all know that.
Right. Uh, you can stop by and look at the plans that are right down at fifty-five C Street.
Oh, okay.
And there's no... Just stop by any, any day.
I'm in there by eight-thirty every morning.
Works there every day.
Oh, okay, thank you. We've been here a very long time. My grandparents live here, my...
You lost a whole generation in ten minutes there, right? It's a whole amount of big generation.
Thank you for hanging in.
Thank you.